Kind of a hard time hearing, hearing you all.
Can you hear us, Matt?
That's a little better. I was having a hard time hearing you earlier.
Matt, can you hear us now?
Yeah, I can hear you. It's just kind of, it's a little garbled.
Really? How's it now, Matt?
That, that sounds better.
Okay, great. Okay. I'd like to call the special public hearing on the town plan adoption to order at 6:03 PM. First, uh, let's see. Can iPad three, can do you identify yourself? iPad three? Uh, we're gonna ask, we're probably, can you take them out?
Do you send them like a message iPad three? Something alert.
Sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Robert Bazin, Bazin Brothers.
Oh, so you're here later for the, the regular meeting?
Yeah.
Great, well, you can listen to this too.
Okay, no problem, thanks.
Thank you, I'll mute you again if you don't want.
Yeah.
All right, um, so Matt, um, we had some changes at our last meeting and they have now gone back to the planning commissioners, are understanding that they have also approved them. Is that correct?
Um, so the, the revisions that the select board discussed, I sent those red line changes to the select board for, for your consideration this evening. So, the next step for the select board is if, if there's support for those changes is to following the public hearing to approve those changes and then at that point, uh, we would have the planning commission review the changes and provide comments on them. So at this point, the, the planning commission hasn't reviewed the changes just because we were waiting on the select board to kind of officially approve them, yeah.
Okay. So, um, are there any public comments about, uh, the town plan? The town plan changes that the select board discussed at our last meeting? Does anybody have any comments on that? Sarah says she feels exhausted on it and thank you for all your efforts, Sarah. We appreciate that.
I've exhausted my ability to comment.
I've exhausted my ability to continue to print this thing, so, uh, anyway, um, I don't have any other comments at this point. I think it's been around the block a lot of times, um, and I think, the, the things that we did at the last meeting were important but somewhat in minor in scope. So, does any, anybody have anything to say about it? Hearing none, then somebody should make a motion on the board to approve the changes to the town plan.
I make a motion that we approve the town plan with the red line changes and return it to the planning commission for their seal approval.
Second. Anything?
Um, so again, they come back close then.
Then we have to find, now, well, but there's, hold on, Matt. So now, after the planning, the document needs to stay unchanged for 15 days, is that correct before we can approve it?
That, that's right, so, um, because you're making, you're making changes to the plan, uh, you do, you do need to hold another public hearing. And, um, a public hearing on the, the plan as changed, um, and before that public hearing, um, the planning commission would, um, provide comments on the changes. The planning commission does, does not, um, they don't vote on approving the plan again, they're just reviewing the changes to make sure the plan is still consistent with the statewide planning goals. And, and then the planning commission would provide those comments, uh, to the select board, uh, before the next public hearing. You can, you, you can do something similar where you hold a public hearing, um, before a regular meeting. Um, and then you could approve, or you could adopt the plan at that regular meeting. But you do need to, um, you do need to provide 15 days notice, um, for that public hearing and have the plan available, so uh, we wouldn't be able to make it for your meeting in two weeks because there's not, not enough time. So probably it would be that first meeting in June that the select board would consider adopting the plan.
Okay, understood. Okay, yes, Jeanette. Does it need to go in the newspaper again?
It, so it does need to get noticed in the newspaper again and I can follow up with you, Jeanette, tomorrow, just, uh, about the logistics of that.
Okay, anything else about the, uh, motion to approve the changes in, of the town plan? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye. We, I just want to thank you all for the time that people have spent on all this because this is a big document, there's definitely a lot of times, but it's thoughtful.
Uh, yeah, it's a hundred and twenty some pages. Okay, so we're gonna come out of the public hearing, uh, at 6:09 PM concerning the adopt, the town plan adoption and we're gonna move right into our regular meeting early today. Yeah, that sounds fun.
Good job, didn't do it that way.
Public.
You're gonna have to sit here for 20 minutes.
Okay, so I'd like to call the regular meeting of the, the Dover Select Board to order on Tuesday, May 7th at 6:10 PM. First order of business is public comments.
Just, uh, that the Vermont tourism is gonna be here for, it's like, or for, there's gonna be a, no. A Chamber of Commerce mixer tomorrow night at the Grand Summit, plus I signed up as a select member to attend the event.
Very good, nice job though. Good. Thank you.
So, if people, if people can go, that'd be great because there'll be people from Vermont and other tourism and the more people, the better it looks for us, us and the town hosting it for, you know, for Chamber members, but I just remember anyone that's a business or wants to go can go, my opinion.
I would join you.
Scott?
Uh, Thursday. Thursday and Friday at four and, four on Thursday and five, I think, don't quote me on that, there's a Peter Pan, 5:30, I don't, something, maybe 5:30, Peter Pan at the Dover School, there's a lot, the whole school's getting involved, a lot of, um, family members, something, parents and stuff, give their time, so I have to go to the summit, the next day you can just go watch Peter Pan and we got your whole week scheduled for you.
And, uh, just for everybody's information, they did not need to use the chairs from the town hall, they found enough chairs around the school, so it makes everybody's life easier. Okay, okay, we're moving on, highway. First order of business with our road commissioner is to review the 2024 paving bids.
Okay, so for the 2024 paving bids, we had five bids this year.
Hold on, hold on one minute. Can people in the audience hear Travis? Can somebody say if they can? Okay, yeah, why don't you come a little closer Travis?
We had five bids this year for paving. They range from 9246 to 10774. Um, Beckham Road Corp came in at 10774. Bazin Brothers, 9260 per ton. All States, 9640 per ton. Springfield Paving, 9246. Fuller Sand and Gravel, 9875. And as you can see, I listed some job, the job totals here for you guys and, um, I did apply for a plastic paving grant, I don't know if we've received it yet, if we're gonna receive it.
But these are mostly within our budget?
These are, yes, mostly, all, all except for one is within, within budget.
So what's your recommendation?
I recommend that we go with Springfield Paving. Um, I feel like they've treated us pretty well in the last couple of years. They did an exceptional job last year on Dover Hill Road, I thought it came out really well with the mill and, uh, the two inch mill and fill on quite a bit of that. And, uh, yeah.
Comments? Questions? This, very none, does somebody want to make a motion?
Is to authorize him entirely, we just.
Authorize, they're authorized?
I make a motion that we authorize the, uh, road commissioner to contract the Springfield paving for the 2024 paving projects at a price of 20, excuse me, 9246 per ton. An estimated total of $530,165.64.
Second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have, we, the truck purchase, the pickup purchase.
Yep.
All right.
This is to replace Dave's maintenance pickup. This is to replace it with a three-quarter ton regular cab, red pickup with a, a brand new V plow. These prices are with, with the new snow plow installed, ready to go. Um, I only received two prices back out of four people that I've contacted. And I did check in with Prater Subaru because I have heard that they just buy vehicles outright competitively, so we went down there for an estimate and they came in real close with, you know, a purchase for our trade.
So, the, yeah, what kind of, what, what are the makes on these, do you know?
They're all, they're all GMC.
Okay.
Chevrolet GM third, yeah, they're all GMC.
Okay.
Yeah.
All the same.
Yeah, all the same, yeah, same truck, yeah.
Didn't you have a Ford before?
Yeah.
So you changed, did you have no Ford bids?
I did, I did not get any Ford bids.
That, because you don't like Ford no more?
I, I haven't. We have spent a lot of money rebuilding front end of that truck multiple times, I'm ready to try something different. I've had good luck with mine, you know what I mean, so it's gonna be.
On vehicle.
Yep, be equivalent to mine.
Sarah, um, so, is there any? I mean, in terms of like, because it says it, it offers the maintenance, so the drive to Keene is essentially the same as the distance and drive into Springfield, right? It's not gonna be any more than this.
Yeah.
There's not one, there's not a big advantage to buying from one of the other.
No, no.
And is there any difference in the delivery turnaround?
No, neither one of them have it in stock, they'd have to get it in, but they were able to give me pricing. Yeah.
And so we wouldn't take delivery of it until 20, the next fiscal year?
I, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I, I don't know when they would have it, but I talked to Marco, he said there's plenty in there if we decide to do it.
And get it done early.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that way, you know, trade values don't change, you know, we would do it soon as they became available, which I foresee it, you know, be probably in there.
Dan?
Hold up, getting rid of one, there's a lot of white trucks out there.
So my only last question?
Hold on, did you ask? Joe?
So my only last question is, we know we get for trade in value. Does, do they need to trade in? Or could you put it out, put a sealed bid and see how much we get over that?
You very well could, but I, I, the fire department has a hard time getting rid of a $5,000 truck, I'd hate to see what a $30,000 truck, you know.
I mean, you could get an extra $1,000, $1,500 to the bottom line.
We estimated the trade at 28,000, I think we came in really close at 26,500, that's just my opinion, I would take it.
Dan?
Project said, in fact, price still does, and deals?
Don't think so.
I don't think so.
But we could, it could be worse. Yes, Brian?
You pay less taxes if you trade in.
We don't pay taxes.
I don't know. How we could do worse if we say the minimal bid is what the prices that we're gonna get?
Because then there's gonna be advertising costs.
So then we go what the advertising cost is. So it's a paper.
But how about if we don't get that minimal bid, then what do we do with it?
We trade it in.
But it's gone, I, I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah, you can put it on there now. Oh, that's right, well, you can.
He needs a truck.
We need the truck.
Until it's, until he has a new truck.
Yeah.
So we can't be without the truck, a truck. Sarah?
It just seems like, I mean, I understand your point and, and if we could make an extra $1,000 or $1,500, but I don't know that we'd make significantly more than that above and beyond this price and for the hassle and the extra work, I don't know that it's necessarily a payback.
Not a comment on that.
Yeah, sure.
No.
Just not right now.
Okay, no back and forth? Okay, sorry. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we authorize the road commissioner to purchase the uh, maintenance department pickup truck from Fairfield to Keene, vehicle price 53606, trade allowance of 26,500 for a total price due of $34,655.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Four to one. Okay, now we have the letter of intent for grants in aid program.
Next fiscal year, but.
Letter of intent to participate in the SFY 25 Municipal Roads Grant Aid Program. Um, and this is, we do this all the time, every year.
Every year, listen, and the Vtrans is, is running that program now, so it's kind of most, I mean, it's a year in advance.
See that, but it's due on May 10th, so we have to get it done.
Yes, please.
And it's just, uh, the board chair.
Right, I make a motion that we authorize the select board chair to sign the letter of intent to participate in the SFY 25 Municipal Roads Grants and AIDS Program.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Let me just get this back to you, because that's important. Okay, good.
Would you get all the brown and all the sand, I like the idea, they still run it out?
The gravel is, gravel I purchased is coming from Winchester, New Hampshire from, uh, a new company that came about and it's called Gordon Sand and Gravel and they called and said, we have, we have X amount of, we have almost 2,000 yards of just Imperial and to sell it to you for this price, we want this piled on. And so I said, well, we can, you know, if we can hold off on the billing until my new budget, I said, we, we'll start moving some in, I'll, I'll start.
Was it a good price?
Oh, gosh, yeah, gravel took a, gravel took a, a giant hike this year in the dollars, like three to five dollars.
Wow.
From what the town is paying. We are hauling it.
Yeah, we, we are.
Distance from Winchester travels.
Yep, yep, we are hauling it.
Extra wear and tear on the trucks, I'm not trying to be the.
Yeah.
It sounds like it's worth it, though.
I guess, uh, our price is well over $5 less than what? We got it for a good price.
Are you done doing this?
No.
I mean, you're, you're done, how long are you gonna be trucking?
I don't know how much is left over there.
Okay, that's, that's.
I can only keep so much at our shop because we don't have the.
You're, you're buying it by the yard, not by the ton?
Yeah, by the yard, yeah. That way, you, you know, when you pay by the ton that you haul on rainy day and you go across the scales, you know, you're, it's.
You're paid for water.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Yeah, we've been stopped by a lot.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. For applying for that grant.
Absolutely, yes.
Are you, are you gonna stay for the, the, um, transfer station? Preparative? Discussion? Marco's not here, so we need to, yeah, so, uh, next up is the fire department, we are gonna open some bids for the F250 truck.
Yeah, sell to the town, 37, that's.
That's a deal. Okay, so.
Can I open that?
Scott?
That's exciting.
Gonna see a winner. It's like, yeah, it's like winning the Academy Award. All right, Scott, you wanna start?
Yep. Do you want me to just have to see the bid amount for the person as well?
The bid amount?
5,800.
5,800.
No, 5,800.
Sarah?
I have 5,615.
I have 5,500.
I have a little bit of 4950.
I think that was the bottom bid.
Well, let's see, Joe has.
I mean, that's huge.
48.
4995.
4995, what'd you get?
You said you have 5,000.
800, 5,800.
850. And, um, can we, who's the, is it somebody, is it local or is it somebody from? Because sometimes we get bids from people across the country, I mean.
It's a 36, it's an 802368 number.
Yes, I think that's local. Yes, Aaron Teft. Um, obviously Whiteham, Jacksonville.
What year's that truck?
2006.
What are you trading in?
52,860 miles, it needs spark plugs and a muffler.
No.
Oh, yeah.
No, the fire truck, she said muffler, it's got new spark plug.
Oh, it says it in the end.
It should have said it has new spark plugs.
Oh, it has new spark plugs and needs muffler, sorry.
It's the spark plugs, it's like, it takes 12 people changing spark plugs.
Okay, so.
It's a Ford.
Okay. So this is the second time, uh, the, the price was originally higher and we dropped the price, they dropped, they dropped the price to, um, 4995, but we got well over that.
And it's, it is another truck, remember, it used to be the highway department truck, maybe before Travis, but.
It was.
And we did paint, paint it, but it's, you know, it ran and it plowed snow, we sold plows, Phil Bartlett. And, you know, I think it's a good place, it served us well, well, so I would recommend you might take the money and run.
I would just start at the top, just make sure to get the full of the months.
So, no, okay, so the top bid, if, if we're gonna start at the top, we're gonna want a certified or a bank check, we're gonna sort of cash.
We gotta get the title too.
All guys on that certified check, sorry, I'm a little bit in the banking thing, you have to pay for all those stuff, so I think cash can also, you know, spend an extra $17 to get a check.
That's on that.
It's on that, we're not paying, we're not doing that, so they can, cash or, or bank check.
Yeah, if you guys just accept the bid, I'll take care of it.
Okay, um, and we ought, need to give a certain timeframe because otherwise we're gonna drop down to the next step. Okay, so somebody wants to make a motion that we're gonna auth, authorize selling this?
I make a motion that we accept the bid from Aaron Teft of $5,800 for the, uh, for the 2006 Ford 250 being sold by the fire department, um, payment to be made in cash, a certified check or bank check by 10 days?
It could be a week, because you don't know who's the other people.
Right, um, with payment, with, with the transaction to be completed, no later than May 15th. May, okay, we can make it.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. You guys, I'll connect with you tomorrow. I just.
Yeah, all the rest are in there attached, yeah, the second, the second highest. Second highest is the next one on underneath.
So just real quick, and it won't take a lot of time, but to share really early, I don't know if we all saw in, in the big family stuff, there's a big to-do in Putney and about the fire department, so here's your report that, you know, that was done, so I was gonna leave this if you all want to take a gander at.
Zoe, baby, that's too heavy to hit with that, it'll break it.
Eric, Eric, mute. Zoe?
Well, anyways, I, I just printed a copy, if anybody has any interest, but I did go through it um, and a couple other people went through it, we looked in a lot of the issues that they had, some of it's not for us, they're, they're not, it's almost a similar county, they have schools that have different time periods, but um, a lot of the recommendations that were made, this, we've already started doing that, such as a training officer, SOGs, um, so I just, I thought it was kinda interesting.
We'll put that together with us.
Well, at Putney, the town of Putney, the town manager hired this AP Triton company to do a study, you know, we had the proper study back in the eighties, this is Triton study of like 2020s for Putney, um, and I just thought if anybody had any interest, um, because I figured, you know, why not use Putney's money for their study and just see if there's anything that's, well, sticks out that could help us. Well, it's not me, it was our training officer that did it, you know, um, Dan Miller, he pulled it up because it talked about training and he said, we, we want to make sure that we were covering a lot of the training issues. I mean, there's a few things we could do a little different, but I just wanted to give it to you all.
Thank you. Okay, next. Okay, next we have unfinished business, and we're gonna update on efficiency Vermont meeting. Thermal audit and the MRF mini grant. We're at the, the MRF, they updated.
Give me about two cents?
Yes.
Um, so Sarah and I met with Chuck Clarisi of Efficiency Vermont. Several weeks ago, uh, regarding the town office building and how we can. Um, look at options for including heating. Systems here in this building. So, one of the things he suggested was having a thermal audit done. Um, to sort of discover where we need, you know. What exactly this building really needs, um, as far as insulation and stuff. Um, so, this is similar to what was done at the library and the town hall recently, we go back in January. Which was covered under the, the MRF, um, program. So that didn't cost the town anything, um, but we also received that mini grant from this program, which was four thousand dollars. And I did confirm with them that we can, um, use that money, that grant money to have this thermal audit. And that would be, um, so that would be, in my opinion, a good way to use that money, um. What else? Uh, so one of the gentlemen, it's from, um, to, to. The Bosun King, um, are the company who did the audits of those two buildings. I've got in touch with Nick, um, at that company, and he provided an estimate for us. To have that same type of audit done here, um, his estimate's thirty-five hundred, so he got calls in nicely with the grant. Uh, the timeline is approximately two to four weeks, um, to have that done. Um, and this would give us a better idea of the most efficient type of cooling and heating system that would benefit this building. Um, there's also some funding that could be available from Efficiency Vermont as well. To get into like the contracting stage to have that done.
Just wanna say this all, this was all initiated by the, um, the interest area, the, the line item in the budget to. Go with central air conditioning for this building, and so in the conversation with Chuck, we, that's, it kind of brought into an overall HVAC. Or air handling system, and that's where we, how we ended up here.
So, um, does anybody have any comments about this? I appreciate you guys doing that, um, does somebody wanna make a motion that we, um. Use the MRF mini grant money for an energy audit of the town office building?
I make a motion that we use the MRF mini grant funds. To pay for, uh, an energy audit on the town office building to be conducted by DeBois and King. Um, at an estimated fee of three thousand five hundred dollars.
Anything from anybody? Please quiet to me. All in favor? Okay, now we're gonna get to consider credit cards at the transfer station. Marco and, or Travis, and so make sure you weigh in, when, I'm sure you'll probably discuss, but.
Travis and I have been discussing this for a while, and Bobby or Travis, just looking at. The, uh, taking the recommendations of the auditors year after year, you know, minimizing cash at the transfer stations for efficiency and. Of other reasons, et cetera, just. Um, we finally just sat down and took a look at it, so I think we have something that is. Pretty cost-effective, um, the proposal. Is, would be geared towards the town absorbing fees, and that'll be about two percent per transaction, the. Um, you know, looking at will be taken at the transportation, it's about seventy thousand a year, so that would be. If everybody paid with a credit card, that'll be about fourteen hundred. And there's probably a couple hundred dollars on top of that of per. Five cents per transaction, if you have five thousand transactions at five cents, that's two hundred and fifty dollars, so. I think just, this just makes things more efficiently, more efficient up there, since things have just exploded up there since COVID. So, it's a handheld wifi device, the attendant could. Walk up to the customer, take the swipe, you still have the ability to accept the check or cash if, uh. The board's still wanna have the ability for people to, to pay with cash, um, we could do that. So, right now, we're looking at getting some, making sure that the internet wifi up there is strong enough. Needed a good, strong wifi signal for this. That's kinda where Taffy's gonna look into that, so. Um, I think it's a good idea, Travis thinks it's a good idea, so. I think Joe and I have discussed it, it was my liaison, he thinks it's a good idea, so.
And the auditors. Will like the ideas.
Is there a merchant, a merchant service charge every month?
Fifteen dollars. And machine is free, compared to square, it's like a square device, there are no, there are no upfront costs, and it's. Cheaper, the percentage is. Per charge is cheaper than square.
Other comments?
But there's no monthly charge.
Yeah, there is. Fifteen.
No, not square. I've been using square for ten years.
But it's ten thousand.
You pay more per transaction.
It's a thousand dollars to buy the machine, isn't it?
Right.
Yes.
No, it's not a thousand dollars, the square terminal's four hundred.
That's still three years.
So this is working with Community Bank on this?
It's a, it's a division of community, it's their merchant services, so even if we were. Not that we wanna do the same time sooner, have any intention, if we left Community Bank, nothing would change. We just give them a new, a new account on them, so, we're not tied to the bank.
That's good. Sarah, is there any, um. Because mo, a lot of these transactions are gonna be really small.
Right.
So is there any?
No, no minimums, no.
Okay, so they're not like, you have to pay at least a dollar.
No, that, and that's geared towards, that's why I like this product, is because it's like going to buy a cup call. You know, there's no minimum, for, you know, not gonna charge you without, if you can buy a three dollar bank check, so. Yep.
This would make you, would this make your life a little bit easier?
Absolutely.
So for saving time there, that alone could be worth.
So every night, every day, we'll get paid. If.
Joe?
If set up properly, it'll also track a little bit better where we have categories, so we know how much money is going to the demo dumpster, I think we have a really good. Tracking. Right?
There, there definitely some.
In the optimization, we could do with this vice. And.
Hold on.
We are already losing money at the dump, it's not, doesn't, it costs the town money as taxpayers, it don't use the dump. So I think the, the ease of the user is the most important thing here. Not turning people away, cause they didn't bring cash or they didn't have their check, most people are using cards now, so we're just about everything, so. It's a good way to move, and not to say anything, I think this should also eventually work its way into the town clerk's office. There's no reason why we should have only one entity utilizing a service, it should utilize down at the town clerk's office. So that everyone can have ease, and that was a better.
Buy their stickers, but they can buy them up at the.
Ultimately, as a select board member, I think we should be cautious.
Well, I have a major problem with that, and you know I do, because I think that there are people in this community. That that would cut out their access, and I feel that the people, the most vulnerable people, the people who don't have. Much money and the elderly are the ones that are, are really the ones who would feel it, and honestly, I, after Marco set this out, I went in and talked to my husband. Cause he's the one who goes into, he's like, I'm going up for two bags, I'm gonna, I like to get two dollars, I'm not gonna run a credit card for two dollars, and that's ridiculous. No, so the point is, some people just don't have cards, some people don't have that kind of access. And why would we wanna make it hard for somebody to say, I don't have, I don't have a credit card, I can't go and get rid of my trash properly? You know, so I don't feel today that that, we have people who come to our office and pay cash. You know, so I don't feel the ca, it's a cashless society, I think there, we try to make it that way at, at times, and I think it really. Disembranchises a certain group of the, the community. Yes, which I think is even like more the reason why we just need to go forward with this, and we should probably have it down. In the town offices as well, because there are some people who do not carry cash, and they go up there and it is, I've, you know, done it, so, so. I, I, I think keeping it all o, options.
I think, I think keeping the cash option at least for now, just to see how it goes, you, obviously, it's, if you've mentioned making it's access to services, so. I, I don't really carry a lot of cash, though for me, it's nice, just to swipe my, tap my debit card, I'm not gonna use a credit card, but I will use my debit card. Um, and as far as the town office, uh. On, on the clerk's side, I think that's a discussion for Andy, you know, I'm kind of. Going behind, not that, not speedist for Andy, you know, but I think it's something you would have to embrace, put it out there.
Yeah, and it's, it, I mean, Andy, it runs his own office, so.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yes, you may.
With square terminal, this little device here, for a hundred dollars, you can have a cash draw. Set it up where you go, boom, cash, you draw it up and you put the cash in, now you have. Registration of what cash is going in, as well as.
This has the same thing, you can do that too, okay. Just about to say square, then, that's all.
Sarah?
So it's, so it'll serve as a, a, a record-keeping function, as well as a payment collection.
Well, I guess.
Taffy? And as part of this, I've been talking to Marco about, as I'm getting ready to roll out the new online. Application software tying that in, so that people who are filing applications digitally and remotely will be able to. Pay for those applications, rather than necessarily sending a check, all of that, it's got a lot of use in multiple departments, especially for me.
But we do have to make, if we start doing that, the fees do mount up extremely fast. And so we do have to be cognizant of that, and, and so maybe build that into.
I would tag me if I made, is referring to a different screen. If she would be using the stream that we use for property taxes, and that would include the, the service fee would. Be on the, the payer. They're not.
Very good.
So, yeah.
Any other discussion? So, um, we should have a motion to move forward, assuming at this point we have enough wifi.
Right, I don't think we're ready to pull the trigger.
Right, but, but you should, I should.
But I. I'm working on that.
Okay, so maybe we'll just give you the thumbs up, move forward, does that work for everybody?
Just so that they can keep, so it's not our.
Should we, um.
Yes.
Sorry, should we maybe have a phase in period of advertising in the paper, or have some signage up there, or?
Signage on the website?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm saying too, maybe like a soft launch where, you know, some people know about it, we can test.
Right.
With a smaller group of people, and then, like, the people who read the minutes for the select board meeting, would be, would be the self-selected population.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not ready to launch it yet, so we're not.
When we first start, maybe we don't try to do it with a huge rollout, because if there are glitches, it'd be nice to get them worked out, and then do.
And we have multiple.
On the website, on paper, all different kinds of.
Okay.
We have multiple attendants, we'll have to train on it, so, right. So, that, that's important. Oh, great, good, nice, Joe, I, I bet you're thrilled.
It's only taken about seven, eight years to get something.
Hey, hey, let's, let's not complain about that and celebrate that we gave it to the party, okay?
Okay, alright, next, new business, we need to schedule employee department head reviews. And our summer meeting schedule, but let's do the department head reviews first. Um, so the department heads do their own self-review, and we need to have those before the. The board sits down and does reviews, and then we need to schedule the actual review day, and this all has to be done before the end of June. So, what days generally work for people?
Uh, my availability changes week to week, but I can, if I know about something, I can make sure I'm available.
Uh, we usually do it like a Friday morning at the town hall.
Yes, I can tell you, last year, you did, the board met, um, in executive session on June first. Which was early, um, and then June eighth, have the employees.
So the equivalent dates would be May thirty-first and June seventh.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be.
That was really early for us, especially we're not, so that would mean that the department heads would have to have theirs done early as well, because.
We'll go on a little later, seventh and fourteenth.
I think that seemed to more reasonable.
Travis is very early.
So, so we're gonna need the department heads. Materials here by June fifth, because Jeanette's gonna have to pull them all together. Talk to any department head who does not have theirs done, and get them so that we have all of them on the seventh, and then we will be. At the Dover Town Hall, assuming that's available, but we'll do this tentatively. At, what time, eight, nine, eight thirty, eight? That way, we probably will be done before lunch. And then, on the fourteenth, same thing, it started eight o'clock, cause we have plenty of people who start early. Okay, assuming those, the, the town hall is available for those two mornings.
Okay, you can use one.
So did you get the fifth for the apartment heads?
Seven.
I mean, it's not, they need to get it to Jeanette by the.
Oh, right, thus, yes.
We're gonna meet on the seventh, and then we'll meet scheduled appointments on the fourteenth. Everybody who's a department head here around on those dates.
I have a rapid question on the fourteenth.
We can, we can do, we can probably.
When do you leave?
The thirteen.
And you're gone then the whole next week?
No, I'm just, it's just a long event.
We'll, we'll figure it out, please. Alright, we'll go with that, alright. The summer meeting schedule, Scott had expressed interest in not having. A meeting or two during the summer, like once a month, maybe. Alright, did you have any specific meeting you were looking to not have? We have. Three meetings in July, the second, the sixteenth, and the thirtieth. Oh no, second and sixteenth, and then the next meeting would be August sixth, and I probably can't make that meeting, so.
Can I say comment?
Yes, yeah, I'm saying, I'm not trying to skirt any type of responsibility, but this does, you know, cost the town players money to have meetings, there are other people that.
That are here, that, so, and, and I do think that, especially if there's not as much, I'm fine with having two meetings if that's what it warrants, but. The rest all come, if, if there's a later schedule, then just maybe one in July. So maybe one in August, and we can have the second one scheduled there, but if you don't need it.
Sarah? We also need to be aware of everybody having a responsibility of showing up to review warrants. So we're not just reviewing warrants once a month.
Right, true.
So that Jeanette can pay our bills. So we're only gonna go to one meeting a month, it's part of that, it's gonna be a commitment to come in.
I agree. So, the summer schedule would be north, right now, July second, July sixteenth, August sixth, and August twentieth. Well, we also have to set the grand list, that's in that neighborhood, and that's, in the taxes, so.
Yeah, it's that early July.
So then we should just do one. Instead of doing the second, just do the one that we do. For setting the tax rate. Now that is.
The, so I second? The July second?
No, we can't set the tax rate to last second, no. We don't have, we need the grand list, right?
That's right, usually, they've been pretty good about getting us the, the education read. Early by the first or so of July. So we'd be cool so to the ninth, uh, no, the first and third, right?
Well, see, if we start moving to a different night and we start pinching on other groups and, you know, boards that meet on the second and fourth.
Right.
So. We can always do a special meeting for that too, and which we have done many times.
Okay.
Um, so you are saying July, July second's the meeting that you would like to not have?
Yes, sure.
Fourth of July, that would work.
Yeah.
That's.
That's a good plan, because right around the fourth of July, so yeah.
And but we might have to have a special meeting that next week to set the tax rate, everybody good with that?
Yeah, it's gonna be on the Tuesday, that normal Tuesday, right, so it'll be, I can't see. Yeah, switch the calendar.
Alright, and then I am going on record saying that I probably will not be here August sixth, which is the first meeting of August.
We don't like meetings.
Start long enough, I know.
So, what, what is everybody thinking here, so we can?
Um, so if we're talking about, yeah, I mean, if we're only gonna have one meeting in July, it'd be the sixteenth with the option of a special meeting to set the tax rate. Earlier, earlier.
Earlier.
Right.
Do we need to set it early, on the sixteen?
Totally forgot last year.
Well, we, we can discuss that, if we need one, we'll do it.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so we're gonna plan to skip July second.
I say we just do the July sixteenth and then do one month from that, and see how it goes, and do the August twentieth. And then we'll skip and then we'll do, go back to like a regular and then strike.
So we're giving up two meetings, is what we're saying.
That is the goal. It's not giving up meetings, it's being, I like to think of this as trying, as Scott has said, is. Just trying to save a little money, have efficiency. Not that, you know, in the summertime, it's, you know, just gives people over the time, but it's not like we get a big crowd, they say.
Yeah, but there are certain things that we have to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Like that way, that way, they're usually in sometime, end of July, like August.
Well then, I would propose that we plan for July sixteenth and twentieth, but. As we're getting into the month of July, if we see that we need to add back the August sixth meeting. Yes, because there are things on the agenda that have to be addressed before the twentieth, and we should all be open to the fact that that might happen.
I think that's fine.
Yes.
That, that one, we're at this point not gonna meet July second, and we will revisit the August meeting, the first August meeting. That work? Okay. Next up is the Economic Development Department, ARPA remaining funds discussion. Hi Eric, did you take, take care of Zoe there?
I did, I apologize for my microphone mishap, I haven't done that in a long time. No, I'm here tonight because we have to spend some money. We currently have a remaining balance of ARPA funds. After everything we've paid for that we agreed to at the public meeting, our remaining balance is one hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. That needs, every, every dollar of that needs to be spent or under contract by December thirty-first of this year. Uh, if it's not, we send a check back. I think with all the things we have going on, you know, the. Potential expenses after the MRP inspection, uh, continuous, you know, well expenses and things, we should. Be able to find a way to spend it, but we should spend it.
Um, we're probably three weeks out from learning the fate of the water up at the common. And that.
Don't terrify.
If it's, if it's good, um, that will be an expensive. Process to try to get that, that pumped up and all that utility room, uh, re, re. Figured out, and, uh, so I think that. We will know pretty shortly if we're gonna put a lot more money into that particular project, or if we have to pivot and go to another. Um, system at the common. And we just got a preliminary three-quarter bill from the thirty-hour, thirty-six-hour test. Uh, which was in the twenty nineteen thousand dollar range, so there's still more to come on there.
Yep, I, I definitely didn't have any recommendations on how to spend the money, just because this has been pretty much exclusive out, out of the ED budget. Um, but I just wanted to give you the heads up that that's what we have left and we have to spend it.
Joe, you wanna say something?
So, can we earmark that, we have, we have spent a lot of money on the water. Does it have to be billed incoming or can be put towards all that water?
No, so we, we back, we backpaid ourselves for things all the way back to the date that we were eligible to do so, which was March. Whatever, twenty twenty-one, so we've already, we've already expensed all that and paid ourselves ARPA dollars to recover those funds. After we did that and everything else that we agreed to pay for at the, at the ARPA meeting, that one sixty-three, eight ninety-seven, twenty-nine is what we have left.
Mine.
I'm wondering if that, what we have left is including. Earmark things for the PD that don't have invoices.
Do you know the answer to that, Eric?
Jeanette, I think, has her hands up.
Yes.
So, that what we've already expended with the ARPA funds included your bottom cameras. And the storage, cloud storage, and your, the new telephone system.
Correct, we also had the outfitting of the new cruiser, which we just got back this Sunday, and I don't have any invoice for it.
Right, that wasn't part of the original.
That's on site, that was part of the. Part of the discussion, later on.
Well.
Mike.
Yeah, yes, Eric.
Mike, do you remember the amount?
I believe my quote for everything was about one seven thousand and you approved thirty thousand for some weird. That was all the equipment to throw in things in an institute where they get the seven.
And that was approved for ARPA funds?
Well, let us do a little research on that and, uh, we will, obviously, we're not gonna spend anything tonight, so, uh. We are going to. We, we have, we can certainly find ways to use that money very quickly, I'm sure, uh, in terms of paying back or whatever. Um, but let's, let's clarify that particular question about the new cruiser. Yes.
Okay, when we originally started, uh, talking about the ARPA, I had delivered a quote for updating some of the antennas. And, uh, updating and increasing some of the Wi-Fi service that's available, let's say to the park or whatever. I'd like to revisit that, uh, it was around seventeen thousand dollars, I'd like to revisit that quote updated and then. Determining what or where we may best use some of that increased bandwidth and. Bring that quote back to be considered for ARPA funds.
Okay.
I, I think that's a great idea, I'd rather have like a, a cell tower right there that could cover the whole thing that we paid for. I know you're looking at me strained, I think I saw.
I just, we.
All these different Wi-Fi things cost a lot of money, and yet we, if we had better. And more cell phones, so in some, your phone would work. That's what I'm saying, a lot of times it gets bogged down by the much traction.
I would be very happy to review some of the cell tower ordnance stuff with you, if. That is something that might be worth pursuing, there may be something that we can do to look at that, so I'd love to work on that with you.
Yeah, and that's efficiency, because then it wouldn't be an ongoing cost to have to pay if we had.
Let's, let's.
It's a bigger than a breadbox to talk about here, let's spend some time and can do it together.
Talk about it, talk about it, we're not gonna spend anything tonight, it's just everybody's mind, but I think in my mind. I wanna know how much it's gonna cost to get water at the, at the common, that, that's a huge, I mean, what?
Yeah.
If we're, if we've got a good water source, let's figure out how much it's gonna cost to get that figured, done. We've spent a lot of money already, we have to see it through in my mind. Well, it's been out for test, the test has been out for like three, three plus weeks, so it's coming soon, hopefully. Scott.
I, I just, I'm just raising, uh, concerns, uh, some of the citizens that they're saying, love to see the ARPA dollars. Throw to something to, and these are all gonna benefit the town, but they had said like, you know. The playground or something like that, I'm not saying, I'm not said hours, it's close to that.
Guessing Eric will talk about that, because I know you, you really need some playground stuff, right, Eric?
Yeah, so we're, we're in a unique position that a lot of towns aren't, where we can fund those. Cool projects for the town with the ED dollars. Um, so, we've already been discussing new playground equipment and things like that, so. That's, that's gonna end up coming out of our budget, you know, once we get it in front of you guys, so. I, I know it's. The, the hope is to do something fun with the money or things like that, but we, like I said, we, we have a unique position here where we get to do that on a regular basis. Um, you know, with the ED money and, and promote ourselves that way, so I, I understand that. Um, and any of those concerns, you can send those people right my way, I'm happy to talk to them.
I, I pretty much said that, I was like, hey, we have an economic development, that's what the idea is.
Okay, I think that everybody's minds are kind of thinking about spending ARPA money, and I don't think we're gonna have a problem. Getting it done in the next six months.
And our Christmas bonus will be.
Well, some towns. They get bonuses, yes, yeah. Alright. Thank you for, thank you for putting it back in front of us, though. Okay, anything else, Eric?
Not today.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Next, we need to go in the Board of Liquor Control.
I make a motion to go into the Board of Liquor Control.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We have an outside consumption permit for Oz Vermont LLC DVA Deer Pavilion.
Make a motion that we have, my.
Yeah.
Make a motion, we approve the outside consumption permit for Oz Vermont LLC DVA Deer Pavilion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We also have a special event permit for a Wine and Harvest Festival twenty. Nine, twenty, and then twenty-one at Mount Snow for Snow Republic LLC, this is the first of, I'm sure.
Many, many, many.
Many.
Many, many ones.
We're good with the Wine and Harvest Festival?
Do, is, is the application, is this complete, do we need to wait for money or paperwork or anything?
Special event permit?
And that project to the state, the money.
Okay. Alright, so I make a motion, we approve the special event permit for the Wine and Harvest Festival on September twentieth and twenty-first at Mount Snow. For Snow Republic LLC.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to come out?
I make a motion, we come out of the Board of Liquor Control.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We have the consent agenda, which was to, is to approve the minutes of April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of April sixteen, twenty twenty-four.
Any changes, corrections, all in favor?
Aye.
I approve the warrants for April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four in the amount of one hundred ten thousand, three hundred four dollars and sixty-four cents.
I make a motion that we approve the warrants of April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four for one hundred ten thousand, three hundred four dollars, sixty-four cents.
Okay, all in favor, is somebody seconded it, you seconded it? All in favor, FYI, we have webinars on childcare contribution that. Um, on the fourteenth and the twenty-first, and you and Marco were doing that, Jeanette? That's why that was not on our agenda, because they wanted to go to the webinars first.
That's right.
Okay. Okay. Uh, the planning commission meets May thirteenth at six thirty. Trails and Rec Committee meets on May fourteenth at six thirty. And the Southern Vermont Econ, Economics, Economy, sorry, Summit, May twenty-first at Mount Snow. And they have some good speakers, too.
Registered.
Good, alright, uh, liaison reports.
Any update on our, Dan?
Thursday, Thursday.
There's a Zoom.
It'd be everywhere.
It's at one thirty.
One thirty?
It's a Zoom meeting only.
So what, what is, can you, give us some.
This is a, like an outline and plans and what we're trying to do, sort of give you some visualization, with your.
Being able to see it?
What's, kinda look like and, uh, where we are in the process?
And there will be a public meeting in June or July.
Yeah.
Uh, that they postponed because they wanted to talk permitting first. Dan?
I got a call from State to the Historical Society to know if there were any photographs. Of when they did the excavation by, so which is all at the pond. So I, so I contacted Jeff Brown, and he thought, somebody he thought might have had photographs of it. But he did recall the fact that it was done by the people who were developing the area from Connecticut. So then I spoke to Liz Sester, who was obviously part of the. Hartford Street Club that was primarily involved in this whole thing, and said it might be in the Hartford current. Do you guys have any photographs?
I've seen, uh, one or two really fuzzy things, kind of take, kind of be like photographs, they wore the channel away.
Right.
It's like, where the channel went, and we're a lot of the channel too. Yeah.
That's like the thing that they want, they want to try to bring it back to the. But no one has any. Live recollection of it.
It's old like, uh.
Vicky, Vicky's thinking she won't have something.
Well, we have all the old photographs that were, uh, from the Deer Film, from the Mount Snow Valley News, they came in old. I mean, old black ones, huge, just a copious amount of them at the office.
We did do, like, we went in there and tested the sediment, like, with a boat and like. Eyewear. The bottom was.
Right.
So I mean, we've done a lot of work in that aspect of it, and we have a pretty good understanding of where the channel went, and that's what we're trying to do.
Nice. The fish will love it, don't forget.
The fish will be, they can't go on a different channel, gotta go on the exact.
Make sure there's no snout waters in the water.
We gotta spend a whole lot of money to fish.
You, good with that?
Yes.
Not really, but yeah.
What are you good with lately, Joe?
No, I'm not, I'm just, it's just. Everyone's gotta work, that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, or do we have any liaison reports? Do we have, need an executive session, I am not aware of that. Well, I'd like to adjourn the meeting at seven oh nine.